The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. At this time, I ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do not have any public awards this evening, but before we proceed with the meeting, I would like to take just a moment to recognize one of our board members for a well-deserved honor. Last week, Mrs. Wiems was named a 2017 Director’s Community Leadership Award recipient by the Norfolk Field Office of the FBI. She was selected for the honor for her dedicated work in opioid abuse prevention and education. As our VB CPS families know, Mrs. Wiems has been tireless in her efforts to increase awareness and education about the devastating opioid and heroin epidemic that our country and community are experiencing. The Wiems family was personally impacted by this epidemic when Carolyn and Billy lost their daughter to an overdose in 2013. Since then, Mrs. Wiems has served on the Governor’s Task Force on prescription drugs and heroin and is co-chair for the Hampton Roads Opioid Working Group, which works to strengthen education and awareness programs in schools and communities. In fact, she has worked with Dr. Cashwell’s team and our Department of Teaching and Learning to enhance the VB CPS curriculum around the dangers of prescription drugs and opioid abuse. That expanded curriculum is now being presented to the Virginia School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association for possible implementation in other school divisions throughout Virginia and across the country. In addition, Mrs. Wiems is a sought-after speaker and presenter at state and national conferences, and she is currently working to establish a nonprofit organization in her daughter’s memory, which will be dedicated to helping addicts and their families. On behalf of the school board and our entire community, I want to offer our thanks to Mrs. Wiems for her work and our congratulations for her well-deserved honor by the FBI. Would you like to say anything?
We just have to keep having the conversation. ...done at home with your parents, with your siblings, with your children, and with everybody because it impacts every one of us. So, the work has started, and so we’ll continue it. Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts. Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent’s report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the board. You know, with the holidays upon us, it is a natural time to reflect on all of the wonders, both big and small, in our community and our schools. And here in Virginia Beach, as I’m quite sure you know, we have incredible teachers, staff, and volunteers who encourage our children to reach their academic potential, but they also model for our young people the importance of responsibility, empathy, and generosity. And tonight’s Compass Keeper quite frankly demonstrates all of those characteristics and more. In her nearly 20 years as a school volunteer, Barbara Seltzer has shared her love of learning with children, as well as a bit of holiday magic. So let’s watch this video.
If you can live as an adult in an adult world, but see the world through a child’s eyes, you’re going to be the happiest person in the world. I mean, the hat! The hat! Once I went the first time, I never dreamed of not doing it. Eighteen years in the third grade, and I mean, every time I walk in there, I learn something new.
She works with the kids every Friday for a couple hours in the morning. She reads with them, she takes pictures of them when they get awards and things like that, and she really makes them feel special. It’s like when grandma comes to visit. They know she’s coming, she comes, and she brings joy, cheer, love, and then walks out the door, you know? But they know there’s going to be another visit the next week.
There are children, and I was one of them. I know what it’s like to be forgotten, let’s just say that. And I want to be the person that I wish I would have had in my life, and I think I am.
She packs book bags, constantly full of school supplies, and she always sticks a little bear in there, and I think she might even put a dollar in there each time. But there are so many kids that don’t have book bags, so she keeps us stocked up.
I’m a professional shopper. I do the coupons and do all that stuff. Christmas time is the time, because they’re right on that cutting edge, you know? Well, Santa is, you know, Santa maybe. Oh, yes, Santa is real. This time of the year is the time that all these good things, all these things happen, that it should be like this all year long. If you can just touch a child’s heart the way they touch ours, there’s no restriction. They just love you, because if a child accepts you into their world, you are one lucky dude, I’m telling you.
Well, Mrs. Claus actually visited Arrowhead last week, and as she was leaving a classroom, a teacher heard one of her students say, “Yeah, Mrs. Claus visited my class last year, and she looks the exact same, so that’s how you know it’s really her.” I’m pleased that here with us tonight is Mrs. Seltzer and her husband Charlie, and Arrowhead Principal Ben Gillikin, and a couple other members of Arrowhead staff. And so if we could just ask you to stand up so we could say thank you for what you I have to tell you, Mrs. Seltzer, it’s difficult to put into words how grateful we are for all the support that you bring to our schools, but also to all the joy that you’ve given our children throughout the years. As I think we all saw, you’ve not only helped our students to learn and to grow, but you’ve been another kind and caring adult in their lives, who tells them that they’re important and they’re worthwhile. And as you know and articulated so beautifully in that video, every child needs as much of that affirmation as possible, and we’re grateful to you for sharing that time and that generosity, and of course, the magic of the holiday season as well, and we’re really appreciative of that. As always, board members, tonight’s Compass Keeper video will be posted on the homepage of VBschools.com and on our blog, The Court. Thank you, Mrs. Seltzer, we appreciate you. And just before I close tonight, I do want to wish our board, and our students, and our parents, and our entire community a happy holiday season. I hope that it is safe, and that it is restful and relaxing, and we look forward to seeing everybody back after the winter break for what should be a terrific 2018 together. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, that does complete my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on the public hearing about the disposition of school board-owned property located in the Kempstil district?
No, ma’am.
Do we have any speakers on this evening’s agenda?
No, ma’am.
Okay, thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on December 5th. Motion is made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Ms. Manning. Voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. The minutes have been approved, excuse me, I lost my thought here. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting this evening with one slight change. We will have an adjusted workshop immediately following our formal meeting this evening, and the adjusted workshop, the additional workshop that we will have will be on compensation strategies. So we will be adjourning here after the formal meeting and going back to room, to the Einstein Lab for an additional workshop on that. And then we will have a closed session following that as well. Mr. Edwards has moved to adopt the agenda as amended. Is that correct? Seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. The consent agenda has two items this evening. The first is the textbook adoption for the Advanced Placement AP Human Geography, as was explained in the information part of our last meeting. And the second item is the religious exemptions that were presented in our agenda packets. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion is made by Mrs. Rye and seconded by Mrs. Riggs. And the voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. Under the action part of our agenda this evening, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. The motion is made by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Felton.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma’am.
I wanted to confirm that that included an addendum that was sent to the board earlier, rescinding a resignation or retirement, I think it was.
Okay. Did everyone receive that? Is there any discussion? Okay, the voting board is open. Mrs. Riggs made the motion?
No, it’s Melnick.
Mrs. Melnick made the motion and seconded by Ms. Felton, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, the voting board is open. So the personnel and administrative appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our newest administrator?
I certainly would. If I could ask Erica Yellen to please stand up. Ms. Yellen, I’m pleased to report, has been approved this evening by you all. You’ve approved our recommendation for her to serve as a Public Relations Coordinator in the Department of Media and Communications. Ms. Yellen comes to us from the United States Navy, where she served with distinction as a Mass Communication Specialist and a Public Affairs Specialist, and then most recently as a Marketing Coordinator with the GBS Group. So welcome to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and congratulations. That is all, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. The information part of our agenda has three items, with the first being the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 17, external auditor review. Mrs. Pate?
Good evening, Mayor/Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman Edwards, School Board members, Dr. Spence. I’m pleased to introduce to you this evening Greg Bussink. He’s a principal with the external auditing firm of Clifton-Larson Allen. He will be giving you a brief overview of the work that they did for us at year end, and also a result of our audit for the fiscal year ending 2017.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. So, here to present the results of the audit. I have good news. This year, the school system received an unmodified opinion. You may have heard that called a clean opinion as well. We met with the Audit Committee previously and briefed them on the results. We had a pretty detailed conversation, had a lot of good questions, a lot of good interaction. So our audit is conducted over the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It’s a pretty thick document, you’ve got a chance to take a look at it. A lot of good information in there. It’s important when you take a look at that to keep in mind that there’s additional information in addition to the financial statements. There’s notes to financial statements, there’s statistical assessment, there’s introductory section, a lot of information there to keep in mind and to read over as you try to get an understanding of the document and the financial results. So in addition to an unmodified opinion, I’m happy to say that we had no internal control findings this year. The single audit, or the Uniform Grant Guidance Audit, is conducted in conjunction with the city and the schools together. Those two, I’m happy to say there were no findings there related to compliance, so that’s what you want to clean bill of health there. I want to thank management, all the folks within the administration. We get outside of the accounting shop, we talk to finance, we talk with several members of the board, superintendent, as part of our process to get an understanding of the school system, how you operate, what you do, and how things happen. So, I want to thank them for their help, and then, that’s really what I wanted to present tonight, was summarize the results of the audit, and then open up for any questions.
We have no questions, but thank you.
You’re welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Industry Credentialing Report. Mrs. Lockett?
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I’m Dr. Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education. Angelique Hendricks and I are here tonight to present a summary of industry credentials earned by Virginia Beach City Public School students during the 2016-17 school year. Each year, the Office of Technical and Career Education compiles and examines data from the administration of industry credentials taken by Technical and Career Education students at the Division’s high schools, the Advanced Technology Center, and the Technical and Career Education Center. This information is used to provide feedback to teachers, administrators, and staff regarding curriculum and instructional practice. It is the mission of the Office of Technical and Career Education to provide students with the standards and skills necessary to succeed in a global economy. With this in mind, TCE students work towards a stackable credential model. This concept is the core of Virginia Beach’s industry credentialing system. This model, in this model, students have the ability to acquire portable and stackable workplace credentials to help them move along a career pathway. Whether our students plan a pathway to college, the military, or directly into a career, the credentials they earn during high school are valuable indicators of their accomplishments and prove that they have surpassed local, national, or globally recognized standards of industry and are ready for the next step. Virginia Beach is proud to be a national leader in the movement to earn credentials for students. Forming the basis for our stackable credential model is the Workplace Readiness Skills for the Commonwealth Assessment. This is built upon by skills acquired in the Microsoft Imagine Academy, and can be further enhanced by program-specific certifications that pair with students’ TCE classes. In this way, a pathway is created and strengthened for both college and career readiness. Since our last presentation to the school board, I’m pleased to announce that our students are continuing to earn industry credentials at a growing rate. 2,353 students earned the Workplace Readiness Skills credential in 2016-17. This is 895 more certifications that were earned the previous year. 1,389 students earned Microsoft credentials, including 30 master-certified students. This is 417 more credentials than the year before. And 6,879 program content certifications were earned, and we control for the CWRA+ exam, this is an increase of 135 from the previous year. The data for the 2016-17 school year shows that 12,765 industry credential assessments were administered from 115 different credential assessments offered in the division, and that since 2002, our TCE students have passed an impressive 78,792 total third-party exams. At first glance, it appears that the rate of industry credential attainment drops in the 2016-17 school year. However, with the exception of the College and Work Readiness Assessment, known as the CWRA+, the rate for TCE credentials earned last year actually increased. The overall count of 10,621 credentials earned does not include any CWRA+ test results, as the test was not given in the division last year to facilitate a shift from testing all juniors through their English class to testing students during their senior year. Nationwide, most CWRA+ tests are taken by seniors, and this change puts our students on a more level field with their peers. The Virginia Beach students who took the assessment in the 11th grade were already accounted for in our 2015-16 report. CWRA+ testing resumed this fall. To put this temporary dip in perspective, 2,153 students earned the CWRA+ in the 2015-16 school year. So while the graph on your screen shows an decline of just 600 credentials passed overall, when adjusted for the CWRA+, TCE programs actually increased credential attainment by more than 1,400 tests last year, and boast the highest pass percentage of students to date. The division-wide and industry credential pass rate last year was 83.2%, an increase from 76.9% the previous year. Our students also passed these industry exams at a higher rate than their peers across the state, beating the state average pass rate by more than 6.5 percentage points. This is a testament to the hard work that our TCE teachers and students do in their classrooms every day. We do look at how our students compare to other students in the Commonwealth. This table shows a snapshot of just 10 of the 115 different assessments administered last year. Looking at this list, you will see that our students passed the Workplace Readiness Skills test for the Commonwealth with a division pass rate of 86.6% compared to the state average of 76.6%. You will also see that Virginia Beach students outperform state average, the state average, in areas such as networking and security fundamentals, financial literacy, and Adobe Dreamweaver. As a total comparison, where measurable, of the 115 different credentials administered, Virginia Beach City Public Schools boasted an overall pass rate of 83.2%, well above the state average of 73.9%. It’s important to note that Virginia Beach’s high industry credential pass rate does not happen because we play it safe. Take a look at the test for the Manufacturing Specialist at the bottom of the list. This test comes in almost 3 percentage points below the state average, with Virginia Beach City Public Schools testing 42 engineering students at the ATC. Only 13 of these students passed the test. We offered this opportunity to students because it was recommended by our business partners in the community and the Virginia Manufacturing Association. While our overall pass rate appears low, only 15 students passed this test statewide last year, meaning that only 2 students outside of the City of Virginia Beach passed the test.
Wow.
This is a great example of risk-taking to build connections to desirable career pathways. We all learned from this experience and anticipate greater success on the Manufacturing Specialist exam in the current school year. With over 115 different industry credentials available to our students, ranging from WISE Financial Literacy and Cisco to A+ and the National Retail Federation Sales and Service Exam, our students have numerous credentials and opportunities from which to choose. And looking at the data on this slide, they are certainly taking advantage of that opportunity to earn multiple credentials and prepare themselves for the future. Last year, the class of 2017 graduated with 9,507 industry credentials. This is 999 more than the class that came before them. Of this class, 2,244 students earned multiple credentials, 9 students earned an impressive 15 or more, while 2 students proudly walked across the stage with 18 industry credentials. Last year’s seniors were also more likely to graduate with multiple credentials, with almost 300 more students graduating with 2 or more credentials than the class before them. We are proud to be a leader in the state with more than 10,621 industry credentials earned by our students last year, and we know our students are better prepared for college or a career of their choice as a result. At this time, Mrs. Hendricks, our testing coordinator, and I are prepared to answer any questions the board may have.
I commend you on those numbers. That is absolutely fantastic. I’m so proud of you, and the students and the teachers who are doing the work there.
We’re very proud.
Mrs. Rye?
Yes, I would venture to guess that a lot of the public isn’t aware that these courses are, the extent to which they’re also offered in our comprehensive high schools. And do you have any breakdown, did I miss it, of with the number of assessments or credentials passed, what the breakdown is of, you know, the comprehensive high schools versus the ATC students?
We do, and actually, a large number are the comprehensive high schools. And I think, Angelique, can you speak to that, the breakdown between the high schools?
Yeah, I can certainly tell you where it is. There is the, okay, on the spot?
Sorry.
That’s okay.
It’s in your book.
Yeah. We, each year, we create the annual report of school performance, and this provides a breakdown by school, comprehensive high school, by the ATC. And also, in your booklet, your board booklet, you also have that breakdown by school. But should you want specifics, let me know.
Okay, so I just wondered if you had the overall number of the non-ATC TCE versus...
We can pull that for you. We look at it school by school.
We can add them up.
Program by program, and when we do program evaluations, we speak specifically to that school, and then break it down by department and subject area and class. I can tell you that a large number of our Microsoft credentials are earned at the home high schools. You know, we saw large increases. If you look at a place, well, I’ll use Kempstil High School as an example, 2 years ago, before the formation of the academy, they had zero Microsoft credentials, and they were up into the, I think it was almost 400 this year. So we see large things as we see programs growing, and it’s one of the ways that we target programs to grow in the home high school, because not every student chooses the Advanced Technology Center or an academy program, or the ATC. So we work really hard to make sure that the same credentials that are available in one school are available in all schools.
And that’s the message that I think, I’m thrilled that we can get out that message. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, and thank you for that great report. I look forward to that graph showing the total number of certifications or industry credentials every year, for 2 reasons. One, my graduating class is still on there, and it makes me feel young. So I was one of the 702 in 2003. And to see that growth from there, and then to see how many students are earning multiple credentials, because when I was involved, like, to get one credential was a big deal. And to see that there are students that are getting 10, 15-plus credentials is just amazing, and that just opens so many doors for students. So to piggyback on Mrs. Rye’s point about the public not realizing all these opportunities that are out there, I know that I talk about it a lot every time I’m with people, and I just encourage all of my colleagues to do so, because the doors that, you know, education is so important. We’ve got the reading, and writing, and math, and that’s fantastic and absolutely necessary, but where the economy is going, these kind of things are going to open so many doors for these students, and I’m just, I wish I was just kind of, every year, I’m like, ah, if I had just graduated this last year, the number of opportunities that I would have had would have been so much more. And I appreciate you explaining the dip that we had this year in that graph. I saw that in the packet earlier, and I was trying to read through the text to figure out what was going on, so I appreciate that. A couple points in your presentation, you talked about Virginia Beach being a leader in the state on this, and that’s something that I go around saying too. And I think I ask this every year, and every year, I think, I’m told that the data is not really there. Do we have state comparisons for, as far as the number of credentialing, credentials that we have and courses that we offer compared to districts around the state?
What we have is composite data for the entire state. The district-by-district data comes out much later, so we can give you an overall pass rate on a test, or the total number of students that took it statewide, but I can’t tell you how many of those students outside of Virginia Beach were in which localities, because that has not been published by VDOE at this point in the year.
But that comes out later?
In bits and pieces. It doesn’t come out as a whole report, but there are 4 or 5 places where we can grab pieces and start to put the puzzle back. But what the state publishes every fall is statewide data, and we have to take our in-house data and compare it to basically everybody.
You know, with the focus on workforce development, I just wonder if there’s something we can do to help VDOE get that data out there so that everyone has a better understanding where we’re heading.
And it’s definitely something that we ask for each year, and we’ll continue to ask for, and let our legislators know.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. And this definitely proves that we are educating many of our students to be ready for the workforce as they leave us. Thank you so much. Next, our final informational item is the interim financial statement. Mrs. Pate?
Good evening, Mayor/Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman Edwards, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. As of November 30... As of November 30th, the overall revenue trend still remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year, as shown in this first graph. We did receive today the governor's proposed amendments to the Fiscal Year '18 Direct Aid Budget, also known as the COBUS Bill. We did some really quick calculations, because it did come out later on this afternoon. Basically, the governor's budget did include a small increase in their projected March 31 ADM over their original one, it was very slight. They also showed a small increase of about $111,000 in their sales tax estimate going forward, and some other minor adjustments in their categorical programs and their lottery-funded programs. So with that additional information, and some of the calculations we ran through really quickly this afternoon, and putting our latest projection of our March 31 ADM into that calculation tool, we do expect right now a small shortfall in state revenue, about $345,000. And again, if you recall, this kind of is how this goes back and forth when we have an increase in sales tax, they kind of offset that in our basic aid, and so we might see that a little bit off and on, but they are kind of immaterial amounts in the big scheme of things. With regards to the federal revenues, specifically with impact aid, the U.S. Department of Education is still working off of a continuing resolution until December 22nd, so we're kind of on hold right now, waiting for their final budget to get into place before they start releasing payments in that respect. This next graph shows the sales tax receipts. They still remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. Year-to-date through November, we're about $356,000 higher than we were last time this year. In December, we are seeing an increase of about $89,000 over last year at that same time. And then the final graph shows our expenditures and encumbrances trend, and that also remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. That concludes the presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Pate.
Thank you.
That concludes our formal meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do. If you'll give us a few minutes, we'll transition into that portion of the meeting. Before we do that, do we have any standing committee reports?
Yes, we were just talking about that. Do we have any standing committee reports? Mrs. Rye?